It's now six thirty. I'd like to call this city council meeting of February twenty-seventh to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilperson Cosner.
Here.
Councilman Nestor. Councilperson Thomas.
Here.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Here.
Mayor Moser.
Present.
Mayor, we note four members present, one absent. We note a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Pastor John Piff to the ladies in prayer. Here's your microphone you can use. This works much better.
As you prepare yourself in this prayer, looking upwards and looking inwards, I wanted to share with you, because what I wouldn't want you to think, that I'm an outsider, because quite honestly, in the early seventies, I was called into the ministry of pastoring and preaching at the Presbyterian Church up there on Sixth Street. And since then, I had an opportunity to share with the football team. And I'll make this relevant in just a moment, if you bear with me. I know this is just a little bit out of order, forgive me for that. But I wanted to give significance to what we're praying, what we're doing, what we're submitting ourself to. Being the chaplain for the Menneson Greyhound football team, that particular year, we were going to one more game. We were going to Pittsburgh for the playoffs. And after the prayer, one of the players said, "We don't need any chump prayers." And sure enough, the game started, it played in the last minute of the football game. The opposing team had the ball, I'm sorry, the Menneson Greyhounds had the ball, and we were on the seven-yard line. And the fellow that said that "we don't need any chump prayer" was carrying the ball. And he fumbled. And they lost the game. And so I'm asking you, and if you would, saying the prayer, whether audibly or within yourself, even if you consider yourself not a believer, but a person who says that when the rain falls, it causes the grass to grow, on the good grass or the weak grass, but to identify with the purpose for being here and the recognition that in and of ourself, we can do little, but together we can do a lot. But in the presence and the power of Almighty God, we can do great. And with that, I would ask you to join your hearts in prayer with me. Sovereign Lord God over all the earth, we join with all the governing bodies of this great nation in asking for your guidance in all the affairs of this nation and the Menneson government. We respond now to your invitation to call in our times of need upon you, yes, in good times and not so good times, in peace, conflict, wars, both within and without, in triumph or troubles, in plenty or in need, in shorty or uncertainties, and commit ourself in all of our ways without wavering, determined and trusting, seeking your best for this time, our times, the now times, and in all of our seasons. With steadfast confidence, we commit our trust in you from the desert to the promised place until your determined plans are complete, for testimony for others who keep their trust in you. Sovereign Lord, we pray that you would bless, guide, and establish your way for Menneson, its leaders and its citizens, that you would guide and help each of us, both our elected officials and those who speak for the silent majorities. Help us to come to the application of your resources, that others will come to the application of your sovereign working as a city, in the valley, and to the top of the hill, for your glory and our building. Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. See, I believe the minutes of the previous January thirteenth and twenty-third have been circulated. If somebody can make a motion, we'll get those approved.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of minutes of the previous sessions of January twenty-third and the work session meeting of February thirteen, twenty-twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to invite public comment directed to myself on agenda items only.
Ernest L. Graff is twenty-nine Rex Boulevard. I'd like to know how much money we got in the account now, Tony.
I'll give you that report when it's on my turn.
Okay, because you got like over a quarter of a million dollars are laying out here on page four.
Hundred and seventy some, no. No, it's eighty thousand and there was payroll.
Yeah, then you got seventy-four thousand, fifty-five thousand, and eighty thousand.
They're not all from the general fund.
Oh, they're not? Okay. If you guys go into detail, I wouldn't speak.
As I always do.
All right. Now, I don't know if this is for the mayor or for the solicitor. Can you distinguish what is a non-electorial debt versus the other one? Page two.
Talking about the ordinances?
A and B.
Yeah. These are the ordinances for the sewage project. We discussed this two weeks ago. Non-electorial debt means that the residents of Menneson have not voted for that. These are for the USDA loan ordinance twelve seventy-five, I believe it is. That is to repay a portion of the PNC interim financing to kick in the USDA loan number one. The second ordinance is for an extension of the PNC interim financing to finish the project.
Okay, well, then we have two seven and a half million dollars.
We do. So the first-
So what happened to them?
The first seven and a half million dollars for the USDA, that's the first ordinance on the agenda.
What, the refinancing?
Essentially, yes. And then after the project's done, the second USDA loan will kick in, and the city will go through the similar process.
Okay, but A and B is gonna happen simultaneously?
There's two separate ordinances, yes.
A goes first and then B later?
One right after the other.
All right. You cleared it up.
Thank you. Does anybody have any correspondence they'd like to read? At this time, I'd like to ask the solicitor for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. We just briefly touched on the two ordinances on tonight's agenda. We talked about those at the workshop meeting a couple weeks ago. Anthony Ditka, the city's bond counsel from Dinsmore Shoal, is here tonight in case council has any questions. He also has the very important documents that council needs to sign off on tonight to effectuate the closing of the two separate borrowings. Still touching on the sewage projects, we're making progress on the easements. I have two of four necessary through properties up on Rostraver and Graham Boulevard. Did have a pretty good conversation with Cleveland Cliffs. Their easement's progressing through their real estate department. Hope to get back to me soon. Also talked to the individual who owns the Westmoreland Realty. It's a warehouse that sits right behind the satellite sewage treatment facility. Should we be receiving that easement here shortly. And we're still waiting on the railroad to review the engineering plans for the crossing applications. So I have this evening.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask our city treasurer for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council, and citizens of Menneson, this is my report for January. Garbage fees revenue, garbage fees current, we received in January three hundred forty-five thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and fifty cents. That is also the year-to-date amount. Budgets amount is four hundred thousand dollars. Garbage fee delinquent, January received twenty-three thousand four hundred and nine dollars and ninety-one cents. That is also the year-to-date amount. And that is also, including in that is the amount collected by Portnoy, which was six thousand forty-eight dollars and forty-one cents. The budget amount was seventy-five thousand. Garbage fees delinquent, penalties and interest from Portnoy, January six hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy cents. That is also the year-to-date amount. Budget amount, two thousand five hundred. Garbage fees collected for next year, twenty-twenty-five, January nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. That is also the year-to-date amount. Budget amount was a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Total collection of the garbage fees for January is three hundred and seventy-one thousand forty-five dollars and eighteen cents. That is also the year-to-date amount. Budget amount for twenty-twenty-five is six hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. City real estate taxes revenue, we did not receive any for the month of January. Budget amount is one million four hundred and eighty-seven thousand. City taxes prior years collected by the city, January received thirty thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars. That is also the year-to-date amount. The budget amount for twenty-twenty-five was ten thousand dollars. Delinquent city taxes collected by Westmoreland County, we received nothing in January. The budget amount is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Total year-to-date taxes, year-to-date, thirty thousand one hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Thirty thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars. Budget amount, one million seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Distribution is as follows. General fund, year-to-date, twenty-one thousand one dollar and one cents. Budget amount, one million thirty-four thousand five hundred and five dollars and ninety cents. Debt service, year-to-date, five thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. Budget amount, two hundred and eighty thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty cents. Library, six hundred and nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. Year-to-date, thirty thousand thirty-seven dollars and forty cents. Parks, year-to-date, two thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-one cents. Year-to-date budget amount is a hundred and forty-one thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and ten cents. Year-to-date total taxes, distribution, thirty thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. Total budget amount, one million four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Miscellaneous income, real estate transfer tax, January, we received twelve thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. That's also the year-to-date amount. Budget amount is sixty thousand dollars. Earned income tax, January, we received twenty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and five cents. That's also the year-to-date amount. Budget amount is six hundred and fifty-one thousand forty-six dollars. Mercantile tax, January, we received a hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-one cents. That's also the year-to-date amount. Budget amount, twenty thousand dollars. Local service tax, January, we received three thousand eight hundred and seven dollars and sixty-one cents. That's also the year-to-date amount. Budget amount, seventy-two thousand. Tax certification, January, we received one thousand six hundred and forty dollars. That is also the year-to-date amount. Budget amount, twenty thousand dollars. Municipal lien letters, January, we received one thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. That is also the year-to-date amount. Budget amount, twelve thousand dollars. Line usage account, unsecured payments, January, we received twenty-five dollars. It's also the year-to-date amount. Line usage fees, January, we received eighty-three thousand four hundred and two dollars and seventeen cents. It's also the year-to-date amount. Total amount collected in line usage fees is eighty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventeen cents. Mayor, that concludes my report for the month of January.
Could we have a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Make a motion to accept the treasurer's report as reported?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to ask our city controller for her report.
Thank you, Mayor. The controller's report as of January twenty-twenty-five, the general fund, Sholary Federal Savings Bank checking account, the bank reconciliation as of January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. The beginning bank balance as of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four was four hundred and ninety-one thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars and six cents. Deposits made, ninety thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-five cents. Expenses, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-seven cents. The ending balance was two hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-four cents. Outstanding checks, forty-two thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seven cents. There were no outstanding deposits. Reconciliation balance to the bank statement is two hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I'm really saddened to announce that our brother, mentor, friend, and fellow employee of the city of Menneson, Marvin Davis, has lost a battle with cancer and joined his sister in heaven early this morning. It is with those of us here on earth who will miss him dearly, and our deepest sympathy goes out to his widow, Mary. While we do not yet have the details regarding the service, they will be held at the church where Marvin was served as deacon, the Gates of Heaven Church of God in Menneson. Overnight, a sinkhole opened up on eleven-hundred block of Knox. Our engineer, W.C., is in the process of obtaining quotes to determine what it's gonna cost to get it excavated and repaired. Yesterday, I met with PNC. They agreed to reimburse the city for the reconstruction of Pacific Boulevard in Columbus. PNG will also reconstruct half of the leads using the concrete to replace that that they damaged. Today, we're gonna be approving change order five, which allows us to do the pipe inspection in the lines around Marion and Mont Raver, both of which will be paid for by PNG or ABC. Now, if we add the ninth, both upper and lower, that we're approving today using CDBG funds, we have an agreement to fix, we also have an agreement to fix the part of reed that was damaged during phase four. Altogether, that's seven roads that are gonna get repaired here in the very near future. At this time, I'd ask, oh, we did hold an executive session on Tuesday, not on the agenda here, for purposes of employment. At this time, I'd like to ask Lois to read my motions, if she would, please.
And I too, just asked that we just continue to keep the family of Marvin Davis in prayer. This is a difficult time when you lose someone that you love so much. Marvin was a good friend and just a great employee of the city of Menneson, so just continue to keep him in prayer. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the second reading and passage of ordinance twelve seventy-five, authorizing the occurring of non-electorial debt by issuance of a guaranteed revenue obligation bond in a principal amount of seven million five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars pursuant to the USDA loan conditions to accomplish the permanent financing of the improvements to the city sewer system facilities, including, but not limited to, centrifugal lead, concrete lining, and approximately thirteen thousand feet of large brick trunk sewer lines on Third Street, Sixth Street, Ninth Street, and Twelfth Street. Renew eight thousand feet of eight-inch to twenty-four-inch pipe with cast-in-place pipe and replace one hundred and five manholes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Motion for the second reading and passage of ordinance twelve seventy-six, authorizing the occurring of non-electorial debt by the issuance of a guaranteed revenue note in a principal amount of seven million five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars pursuant to the PNC loan agreement to extend interim financing for phase three of the citywide sewage rehabilitation project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Motion to approve twenty-twenty-five rate schedule for sewer rehabilitation project phase three amendment number seven, amendment to owner-engineer agreement exhibit K.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes. There's a section here for comments from me again. I really don't have anything other than to say thank council for going through this. Just so everybody understands, we borrowed fifteen million dollars from PNC Bank as an interim loan. That's because USDA does not pay for construction, they pay for completed project. We completed one, there was two seven-and-a-half million dollar loans for a total of fifteen million. They matched. What we did just now is we paid off seven-and-a-half million dollars on that. We extended the rest of that seven-and-a-half million dollars for another ninety days. This, excuse me?
Thirty months.
Thirty months. Thirty months. How some ever. What we also approved was a change order. This change order will get the project completed by October, if the engineer is correct, of this year. And we will be entirely on the USDA loan process, which is a thirty-year loan at one point, one to five percent interest. Yes. So this is a very big milestone in my mind. Thank you, everybody. Continue, please. Oh, I've got a proclamation here. This proclamation is honoring Mark Coleman for thirty-five years of outstanding service to the city of Menneson. Whereas the strength of the community lies in the dedication of hard work as citizens, the city of Menneson has been privileged to benefit from the outstanding service and commitment of Mark Coleman. And whereas for thirty-five years, Mark Coleman has exemplified the highest standards of professionalism, integrity, and dedication while serving in the Public Works Department of the city of Menneson. And whereas Mark Coleman has consistently performed his duties with excellence, bringing a wealth of experience, knowledge to his role, and ensuring that the operations of public works aligns seamlessly with the needs and expectations of the community. And whereas his efforts have contributed to the maintenance and improvement of the Menneson's infrastructure, enhancing the quality of life for all residents, and ensuring the safety and sustainability of our city's essential services. And whereas the city of Menneson recognizes the deep respect and admiration Mark Coleman has earned from his colleagues, city leaders, residents alike, and acknowledged the lasting impact of his contributions to our community. Now therefore, I, Ron Moser, Mayor of the city of Menneson, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Menneson, do hereby proclaim, February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, I'm sorry, as Mark Coleman Day, in the city of Menneson, and extend our heartfelt gratitude to Mark Coleman for his thirty-five years of exceptional service. We wish him continued success and happiness in all his future endeavors. In witness hereof, I have set my hand and cause a seal of the city of Menneson to be affixed to this twenty-seventh day, February twenty-twenty-five. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Before I go, I just wanna just comment on Mark, just working with Mark and seeing him work. Mark would come to work with a great attitude, and not only that, when he did his job, he always did it well. But not only that, too, he would work overtime and just have, he would act as if he was doing that job for himself. I remember seeing him down Ninth Street Park, and they were installing some equipment down there, and he was there on a Saturday. And I mean, he was there in the morning when I went walking, and when I went back down, he was still down there, and still had a good attitude, a smile on his face. So, Mark, I just thank you, and I hope that our present employees and those to come have the same type of adamant diligence in doing their job as you do. So, thank you very much. So we're gonna continue with our motions. A motion to approve any additional WC charges, which include change order number five and related MS4 needs and requirements for charges and allocations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
We'd like to make a motion to reinstate the police pension board, its membership and purpose. Names and additional information to be provided by Chief Uhas for approval by the council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Motion to approve insurance claim to the city of Menneson Volunteer Relief Association number one and check in an amount of ten thousand forty-one dollars and seventy cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Motion to permit all participating individuals within the prime pay system to utilize an email address to email their bills and EOBs to the prime pay entity rather than being forwarded to the city of Menneson for the resulting processing and upload fax, to complete the service at a cost of one dollar per month, excuse me, per enrollee, for a total cost of eighty-five dollars per month, with a one-time three hundred and eighty-dollar change order fee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Motion to approve Certus Site Fire and Safety Service Agreement Terms and Conditions. Billing information is attached to this agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes. This next motion, we're gonna make a slight change in it. On the second line, where it says "and the FY twenty-twenty-three clearance and demolition fund," will be scratched out.
Motion to transfer unspent CDBG funds for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two activities for Third Street and allocated to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three Ninth Street activity totaling twenty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-five cents, as discussed and presented in the public hearing on October seventh.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Motion to transfer unspent CDBG funds for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three clearance and demolition fund in an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, and transfer it to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three upper and lower Ninth Street paving project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Motion to accept environmental review for activity project that is categorically excluded, subject to section fifty-eight point dash, fifty-eight point five, specifically addressing the proposed project to pave the upper and lower portions of Ninth Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Motion to permit WC to obtain sealed bids on upper and lower Ninth Street restoration contingent DCED approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to invite Councilman Anthony to give his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the general fund in the amount of eighty thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seven cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda's attachment A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the refuse account in the amount of fifty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-six cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda's attachment B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the line usage account in the amount of three hundred and twenty-three dollars and ten cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda's attachment C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the transfer of seventy-four thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-one cents from the general fund to the payroll account for payroll. from the general fund to the payroll account for payroll.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to transfer two, twenty-seven hundred dollars from the general fund to the healthcare fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
And make a motion to transfer seventy-five thousand from the TAN account to the general account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Uh, the following balances are on all the accounts. Grant Fund, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. Payroll is seventeen thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and seven cents. Healthcare is five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. American Rescue is forty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. The General Fund is five hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. The TAN note is four hundred and one thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-two cents. Refuge Fund is four thousand, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. Fire Escrow is twenty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. Debt Services is seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Line Usage is eight hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Liquid Fuels is one thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. Parks is thirty-three thousand, ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents. And the Rec Fund is three hundred and four dollars and twenty-one cents. And mayor, that's my report.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to ask Councilperson Luessa for her report.
The Streets Department report for January twenty twenty-five. Picked up garbage twice a week throughout town, cleaned the civic center, marked PA one calls, salted and plowed streets and alleys as needed. And just a reminder, in event of snow, hills and main streets are taken care of first, side roads second. After they are caught up on the hills and the main streets, alleys are last. They were low and salty at the beginning of the snowfalls, as most of you know, but now they have a full stock in their shed. But unfortunately, they're down to three working plow trucks and have five routes to maintain. So they asked the citizens to bear with them while the other two trucks are being looked at and repaired. That is my report, mayor.
Thank you. Councilman John Nestor, Director of Public Safety, I guess will hold off on his report until the, until the next session. This time, I'd like to ask Councilperson Karen for her report.
All right. This is the Parks Report for January twenty twenty-five. Cleaned the civic center, helped the Streets Department as needed, and they are waiting for a new hire. So that is my report, and I can talk a few things about the agenda. I'd just like to make everybody aware, and counsel too, and you probably know that we're planning to apply for another grant through the Westmoreland County Local Arts Grant. It's due May twenty-fifth. Um, and that'll, that grant will go towards the four concerts that we have planned this summer. So hopefully, we get it, but I wanted, does anybody have any questions about the grant? We applied for the one, um, to, through PNC a few weeks ago, and essentially, it's the same one. There's no match involved. It's, um, just submit the application and hope that they like what we've written, and then...
How much is the total?
The total for... Uh, you, you put down the amount that you want, and I, then they have a certain percentage that they award you if you qualify. And we, it's due May twenty, March twenty-fifth, and I think we'll know by June whether or not we get that grant. Well, we, the, the cost of the project is a little over sixteen thousand dollars.
For all four?
For all four. What I do is I'll include the budget in the, the grant that I send them, so they'll know exactly what, why we're asking for the amount of money that we are. So we're hoping with all these little grants, which comes enough together, and with our donations, that we'll be good to go. Does anybody on council have any questions about that particular grant? Um, one thing I, I do, it's not on the agenda, but I wanted to make you all aware of it. We had received with grateful appreciation the Ocean Conservancy recognizes the city of Menneson for our cleanup efforts. And I know there's some people in the audience who come out to the, the cleanups and everything. So I thought that, I was really surprised to get it in the mail. So we'll frame it, put it someplace. So just wanted to make you aware of it. If you were part of that and helped, thank you. And also, we've been working on a, um, policy manual for the civic center. We're gonna hire two part-time people, so we thought from the very beginning, they need to know how, how to operate the civic center. So I, given, um, we've met on this, the, um, council, so I, does anybody have any questions about the policy manual? I know I've sent it to you. It's, you know, if anybody in the audience wants to read it, it's up in my office. You're welcome to do that.
Do you want to make a motion to approve that?
I sure do.
Go for it.
I have a motion to approve the city of Menneson Civic, Civic Center Use and Reservation Policy Manual.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Chakowski?
Yes.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, we have a presentation by Donna Vesely and Brian Mansler. I don't know if you're going to participate, but at least I want to introduce you, and they are from newly organized Rotary Club, the Mon Yoc Rotary Club. And, um, what's that?
River Valley.
River Valley?
Yeah.
River Valley. Okay. There was a nice article in the paper. Was it yesterday? So you could, if you get the paper, take, take a gander and read it, all about them. But Donna had contacted me, I don't know, a month and a half ago now, about putting up a peace pole in civ, in the city park. And I had never heard of a peace pole before. So she had sent me some information about it, and I believe it's in honor of Stephanie Yurchuk, who, Brian gave me this article, and it was in the December Mon Valley Report. And Stephanie graduated, I believe, in nineteen seventy-two from Menneson, and she is currently the, um, president of Rotary International, and she's a female. Is she the first or second female in that office?
Second in over a hundred years.
So that's pretty amazing. So I, um, I think we've talked about this at our work session, and, um, do you want to come up and really talk about it? Because you know far more than I, considering I never heard of a peace pole before.
Here, please take a mic.
Sure, bring it up. Yep.
I have a very loud voice.
Well.
So, as Karen said, and I don't even know if it's on, because with, is it on? I was going to say with my hearing aids, I can't tell. Stephanie actually contacted me and said that they were making a peace pole in her honor as being the Rotary International President. And she said to me, "Would you kind of initiate and, and ask if we can put the peace pole in the Menneson Park?" Uh, because that's where I want it to be, because that's where I grew up. And, and so the peace pole, and I don't know, Brian, you're pretty, um, uh, familiar with the peace pole and Rotary's initiative. Rotary's not the only one that does a peace pole. But basically, it is, um, to kind of acknowledge peace in, in different languages, especially the language of the community, where it's going to be. So this is not going to be the one, the peace pole that we will have, because, um, they're going to redo it. But may peace prevail on earth will be done in Russian, which is actually Stephanie's Karpol Russian, uh, which is part of the Slavic community here. Uh, it will also be in Greek because of the population here, as well as Italian, and of course, English. Uh, so the, the whole idea of it is that it is put in a place where you can easily see it and, and just reflect on why we're here and the peace. And even if you're having a terrible day, go past the peace pole and just kind of keep in mind what we're all here for, and it's peace. Um, so that's kind of one of Rotary's initiatives, if you will. So you can see, she's a big Steeler fan. Uh, so when they made this, they made sure that they put, um, a reference to the Steelers as well. So, um, we're asking, uh, on her behalf, actually, if we can, uh, put this, uh, in the park. And, um, our hope is that on Earth Month, that we will dedicate it, because she will be here. Um, she travels the world, and she's hardly ever home, but she's going to be here for the Orthodox Easter, which is in April, and so we thought we'd love to have a great dedication, really a big PR, um, presentation of she's going to be here also. So, uh, we are, uh, asking if we can have permission to do that in the park, uh, in her honor. And I know she's proud to be, uh, resident of Menneson, obviously, and so this is where she would like it to be.
Thank you.
You being a local resident, where, where in the park specifically would you like to see this?
Well, Karen and I, um, she was kind enough to, a couple mornings ago, we looked through the park.
Mm-hmm.
There is a, I don't know, it's not a pavilion, but it's a, yes, it's a... Uh, so we thought that putting it right near there, um, might be a nice area. There was, um, some newly planted trees as well. But we went there again today, and that's kind of another thing that I'll, I'll mention a little bit later, why we went there today again. But we noticed, and Karen, you and I, I don't think it really, we recognized it, but as you go into, after you park your car and you walk, start to walk into the park, on the left-hand side, there's a pole there. Kind of a two-by-four, or, or, I'm not good with that, but it's just there. And if you'll notice, um, can you show Brian, like, I guess what the idea is for when you, uh, put this peace pole, that it's actually kind of hollow on the bottom? This is like, yeah. So, um, it's really ideally, you, you put the pole, you plant the pole in the, in, in the concrete, and then it's a sleeve that goes over top of it. And, um, so that pole is already there. Now, it's six foot, so it's not, you know, quite, um, as tall. And I think this was also designed, actually, to go into the ground as well. So it may not work, but it was very interesting, whoops, sorry, very interesting that that pole, there was a pole that already existed. So, um, it maybe could be for another peace pole that's a little shorter. I don't know, but... Pardon? Yeah, it's very possible. We could cut it, but, you know, yes. So, um, maybe we can re-look at that and just see, hey, because it's right as you go into the path. So it would be right there. I'll, I'll send you, show you a picture. We missed it. We missed it. Yeah. Um, so that's one thing. Another thing, while we were there, um, you know, Karen mentioned to me, all some of the benches and things like that are in repair. Um, and these, there's a bridge that actually was presented or, uh, by, I guess, the, um, Menneson Rotary Club way back when. Went before it was Menneson-Rostrever, but the Menneson Rotary Club, um, did the bridge. There's also, um, we think it's the Lions, uh, put that for Patsy...
Patsy Martucci.
Yes, Martucci. So that roof also needs replaced, and there's a couple of things on it that need a little bit of a repair. So, um, I said, our new Rotary Club, our focus is on service, service projects, and we want to do what the community needs, not necessarily what we think they need. Um, and so, uh, we would love to also take that on as a new Rotary Club and possibly also to partner with some of the other Rotary Clubs. Uh, so we were there today, actually, to measure the roofs, because the roofs need replaced. And if you, especially on the bridge, if you don't replace that soon, there's already a hole there. You're going to, you'll, you'll lose the trusses, and, and that thing is then going to be unsafe. So we would like to take that on. Um, so that's why we measured the roofs. We'd like to, to replace the roofs. I, uh, we're a new club, so we don't have a whole lot of money. So we are going to try to reach out to maybe some of the roofing, uh, companies in the area, see if they would, what kind of, uh, cost it would be, or if they would donate it, because it's not, uh, I think the one's two hundred and sixty square feet, and the other ones, the bridge is like a hundred and ten. So, um, we are going to be working on doing that, if that is with, you know, the, your approval. And, uh, we hope then we'll get enough Rotarians and anyone else who wants to just kind of join in and, uh, try to get that repaired, so that, um, you can get a little more life out of it, and it will be safe. So...
Thank you.
Very good. Just one, one other question. Is that plastic, or what was the, what, what kind of material is that? PVC? So, so, I mean, the longevity of that is expected to last how long?
Well, they've had some of them up for twelve years, they said, and...
They're still looking good.
Because, and they, he said, the most you might have to do is, if it gets splashed with dirt, you might want to hose it off. But other than that, and I guess that the decals or, or what's on there, um, is weatherproof. And again, he, I asked about it, he said, "We've had them up for more than twelve years, and they're fine. We've not had to do anything." Because that is a concern. Um, we, we don't want it to be too much maintenance for the, the city. We don't, of course, want to take over any maintenance, uh, for the, from the Rotary Club either. So, uh, that was very important to make sure that, um, it was pretty much maintenance-free. So it also has a QR code. You will see, um, there, put on there. So if somebody does want to get information about the peace pole and where else the peace poles are, they're all over the world. Rotary, um, in fact, they just dedicated one in Istanbul, Turkey this past weekend. Uh, the Rotary President Stephanie was there for that presentation.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
You're welcome. Yes.
Wait, wait till we get to the end. Well, you can ask it about... Go ahead.
Karen, is that bridge that they're talking about replacing and moving, is that the bridge that's in back?
The amplifier?
Yes. Yeah. It's right by the path, right by the path. Yeah. Today, we looked at it. There was a big hole, like I said, and if, if the water continues, it'll, it'll not...
Thank you.
Yeah, I think so. Joe, would we need a motion to approve the placement of the pole?
Well, then I'd like to make a, a motion to approve the placement of the peace pole in City Park. Well, we're not exactly sure where it's going to be. I mean, in the park, we, you know, I want input from people if they have suggestions. When I do the trees, I'm sure if it's dirty, I'll clean it, Ernie. If you were there, you could help me. How's that? Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd also like to make a motion to approve the hire of Linda Carson and Curtis Wade to positions at the civic center of Menneson at fifteen hours per week per employee, subject to the finalization of all employment testing and clearances.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment directed to myself on any items relating to business, ordinances, statutes, resolutions, or daily work product in intent that requires the attention of the city of Menneson.
Okay, when Tony gave his, uh, speech, he just read it off his, uh, paper, and he didn't answer what I wanted to know. That was over two hundred thousand dollars you, uh, paid out today. How much do we have in the bank?
He did say that, by the way.
He didn't say how much the total.
He said, "How much was the total?"
Uh, what was it then?
Five hundred bucks.
Five hundred forty-two dollars and fifty-five.
But we just moved seventy-five thousand dollars into it from the TAN note.
So only five hundred dollars is left. Well, how are we going to make it then?
We just moved, we still got, how much in the TAN note?
We have, we have four hundred thousand dollars minus seventy-five, so you have three twenty-five left in the TAN.
Yeah, okay, but we're going to have now, what, seventy-five thousand plus fi, five hundred dollars?
Right.
Yes.
And that's all going to go next month with, uh...
And then we'll draw upon the TAN note somewhere.
We'll probably have taxes, and by then, plus I need to move next month $55,000 from the refuse account to the general account, because the general account paid the garbage in January.
Oh, so you get that money back?
We transfer and we move it where it should go.
Okay. I just got another question here. You guys, in concert with each other, for instance, you, Tony, with your figures, the treasurer got his figures, and then you got the controller. The controller, to me, should be the lynchpin. It's supposed to be a very important position. So, you guys interact with the controller? No?
She monitors the spending and makes sure that the bills are paid.
Well, she's gonna monitor if they're not interacting with each other.
That's what the function of the controller is. Otherwise, they'd be in cahoots with each other.
Yeah, but they don't talk to each other, so how's she gonna do this?
She gets all the records.
Just, you know, records, no personal interaction. I don't know how you could maintain transparency that way.
It's a very separate function, and it's done that way for a reason. It's to prevent collusion.
I just don't know.
If they two got together and they said, "Okay, we're gonna write us a check for all the money."
I'm not saying to get together. I'm just saying they should be checking.
They do. They constantly check. They constantly check the balances of each other.
That comes all these years. I never heard a controller say, "Hold it. I'm not approving this."
The controller can't.
Well, we can't. She got a very powerful position.
Ensures that all debts are paid.
Well, she could say, "I don't approve this allocation that Tony's doing."
Then she, all she doesn't do is sign the check.
She's one of the two signers.
So, I don't sign it, or she doesn't sign it, it doesn't get paid.
Then it doesn't get done. That's all she has to do.
That's all. She has a question, that's it.
Then how are you gonna, then how are you gonna resolve with that?
Well, I guess we would ask, it hasn't happened, hasn't happened, but if you'll notice, what they, what Jerry and Rose, what they report on is a little bit behind of what I give that is actually current and going on right now.
So, you're the more current than all, both of them?
I have to be, because I need to give you figures every month, twice a month.
Okay, I'm just trying to see how you guys operate, that's all.
But this hasn't changed in all the years or decades. It's the way it's supposed to be for ever.
You can't use history like that, because if that's the case, women won't be voting, we still have slavery and all that bullshit.
Where did that come from?
Well, you just said, you guys do all this year. All right, and then I have one last question. What are you guys doing to bring industry calmerance, so we could start building and repairing our streets and bring people into the city?
We're constantly working on that. You're welcome to come up and sit down and help me do any part of that. But even as of yesterday, we had a meeting in here with Reimagine Westmoreland County.
Okay, but I didn't know about it.
That was because, that's because that was for the mayors and the city council of the communities of Westmoreland County.
Okay, so you guys are basically up to now relying on grants.
No, no.
Okay, this RBE, what have they brought in so far?
Well, they've brought in the CDBG.
The CBC is there all the time.
No, it's not there all the time. It's there through very meticulous filing for application.
Okay, so they got, what, $307,000?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so they got $31,000, okay?
Right.
Okay, so that left us with what, 200 and what?
270.
270. How much of that went to the roads?
Well, no, that's not true at all. First off, what we approved here today was moving money around, so we could do the Upper and Lower Ninth Street. That's gonna cost us right at about $200,000.
Yeah, but that ain't coming from this.
Yes, it's coming from CDBG. It's coming from multiple years of CDBG.
So, that $70,000 is coming from them?
It's coming from CDBG, absolutely.
Okay.
And then next year, we're planning on doing Knox. And you go, you come to these public meetings, and we explain this every time.
Well, you know, it's difficult sometimes to connect. But anyway, one last question. If RSB, or whatever their name is, don't bring in any other grants, and they're just relying on the CBD funds, are you gonna renew their contract, Jim?
That's, I don't know. I don't know.
Because they're not doing anything. They're just cutting on this one.
They're doing everything that Urban Design did for 8% less.
You mean, Urban Design never brought in any other grants?
Never brought in another grant.
They never did?
Never did.
I thought they did.
No.
Well, we still gotta look for somebody that's gonna bring other grants.
We've been, we've been doing grants. We got grants from DCNR. We got grants, we're applying for grants from PNC.
It's their job.
It's everybody's job.
Well, if you're doing all their work, then what have we got them for? We could save that extra $31,000. Anyway, that's all I got to say. Anybody else?
Linda Lacy, 1624 Maple Avenue. I just have a comment, and then I have a question. The question is, Ninth Street, you said you're gonna pave from Scootemaker all the way up Ninth Street to Summit, or is it just going to Knox?
Just to Knox.
It should go up to Motherwell.
It should, but we're going to Knox.
Okay, so you're gonna go to Knox. So, there's gonna be a new road that goes up between Knox and Ninth Street. But when you make a right turn to go into Ninth Street's Park, that's not gonna be paved until, till November?
Say that again.
I mean, okay, you're paving from Scootemaker to Knox?
Yes. We're gonna restore.
And that intersection?
Right.
And you're gonna take down that ridiculous traffic light?
We'll worry about that, yes.
Okay, then when you make a right to go to the park, to the upper part of Ninth Street, is that included in it?
Not, not in this particular phase.
Okay. That's what I needed to know. By now, everybody knows that I called Ross Straver Township Municipal Building, because I was very concerned about our boat launch, since the sports club came up here a couple of weeks ago at our last meeting to discuss how they like our boat dock. Well, our boat dock has been in disrepair ever since 2022, and I think it was put down there in 2012. I'm not sure. But there's also a problem other than the water level, because those barges have never been replaced. And all of a sudden, Tuesday, the redevelopment popped in there with their great idea. Well, where were they in '22, 2016, and 2012? What are they gonna do that the city council can't do? Do they want you to transfer the boat launch to them? Well, why did they have their two cents in it, and why was it a big deal that I called the municipal center to find out who owns it? We own that dock, and I think you already knew that.
Of course I did.
But you told us, the general public at every meeting, when we inquired about it, that it was leased from Ross Straver, and that is not true.
I never said that.
You did say that.
No, I said, "It is in Ross Straver."
I know it's in Ross Straver, but you said, "We lease it." You go back to your records.
We own it. We own it. I never said we.
I hear very well.
Yeah.
That's why I said upfront. So, you go back to your records and your notes, and you'll see that you said that.
Okay.
The problem is, when we had that flood down there, the redevelopment authority didn't call the Corps of Engineers and to go down there and find our dock that floated down there, and we constantly asked them about it, and I thought that was a safety hazard, because that was a question I had for John Nestor, which he's not here. So, my thing is, is the redevelopment gonna be in the process of fixing the boat launch? And why did they put their two cents in it if they're not?
I can't answer that question.
Well, you were sitting at the same meeting I was. You didn't say nothing to them. You try to suppress people who come here, who live here, who where they can't talk. And another thing, Karen, you asked PNC about, I'm done with you, Mr. Mayor. The next question I have is for Karen. You said you applied for a loan for PNC.
Not a loan, a grant.
A grant, I'm sorry, a grant. Make sure in that grant that you apply money to have two carts, golf carts, to bring the senior citizens from the bottom of that hill up to the amphitheater. And another thing is, the amphitheater is not equipped to handle these big concerts that you plan on doing. There's no dressing rooms, there's no bathrooms up there, and you better hope that there's enough money in there to rent the artists who are coming. Rent them a Winnebago.
What?
A Winnebago, a trailer. Or take one of the trailers off of Mon, what is it, Motherwell, and take it up there and let them use. Because when it was built, it wasn't built to have big concerts like you want to put on. And for $750,000 that they put in there, I think it's a shame, that it's inadequate. Okay, and another question I have, and thank you for the peace poll. I think that's excellent to have in our park. And like I'm saying, if the redevelopment authority, they should, everybody on the redevelopment authority should resign anyway, because they're not, nobody is fighting for the residents of Menneson, no one. And if it wasn't for us, you wouldn't even have a town.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Pino, 45 Montraver, 15062. First of all, I'd like to, to say something about Marvin Davis. Unfortunately, he died. Pray for him. My other part is, I want to talk about, I can't talk about Marvin David, because I get emotional. I know Marvin since he was a kid. But on the good part, I went to a redevelopment this past week. So, I go all the time, as you know. Now, the mayor carries a, he comes in and sits down with his computer, which he's taping everything, which it means to mean that he has everything on that computer that happened the week before, the month before, including this past month, okay? Now, I've never been to a meeting to actually, you can't ask questions. At the end of the meeting, they ask you if you have any questions, and when you ask them a question, the asshole, who is the chairman, tells you he might answer next month or the months after that, which is a bunch of BS. And then they go into an executive session, okay? And it's real weird. They brought a cop in, which we've got enough problems in Menneson to where the cop could be used somewhere else, not there. There's nothing going on there, because I asked, over eight months ago, I asked them to hold the meeting down here, because there wouldn't be tape and anybody be able to say, but they denied it. Because it was my deal. I understand that. You know, I'm still gonna work my ass off to get you out of office, because you're not a good mayor for our city. Our city is our city. Just like Marvin was a hound, so are we. You're not. You're out of town. You oughta go with the rest of the groupie that you hook up with, okay? But something that really pissed me off was this. They tell us to leave the room, because they, every time that they want to do something to cancel the meeting, after they talk for 20 minutes about lunch and $50 each that they get whenever they go to Greensburg, it's a $15 trip, but they charge 50, so that's fine. But on the way out, they told me and her, they escorted out, the mayor and a cop, okay? Karen and Mrs. Lee, they kept them behind. Well, unfortunately, I tripped. Oh, no, first I took a seat, because I wanted to sit down. My legs were killing me. Okay, and the mayor says, you know, he had a cop behind, so he was gonna stop. I'd like to get you a mud dam, knock your ass right off the ground, okay? Yeah, that's exactly what I'm telling. So, at the end of the day, you know, they come to me, they're like, "I gotta leave." They got benches there, so you could sit down, right? If you're, if you're not allowed to sit down on the bench, it was just outside the meeting, get the damn benches out of there. So, they, they drove me out, and I started walking out, tripped on some cheap ass carpet that they have upstairs, and I fell. Yeah, I hurt my knee and my elbow. You know, so they still, they told me that I had to leave. And then they told me I couldn't leave, because I fell, and they called an ambulance on me. You know, I think they need to have the ambulance to check them out, not me. I know what was wrong with me. I fell. I'm only 77, okay? But they kept Karen and that other girl who has no part to do with the redevelopment authority. And we had to leave, okay? Now, the cop, which is a young guy, I'm not gonna, do I think he acted professional? No, I don't think so. No, I think he acted like another asshole. That's all I can tell you, okay? He was gonna arrest me. Called the ambulance, then you wanna arrest me. I'm guilty. There's two different items. But I think I make a, I make a pledge, or I make a motion, if you can. She needs to get a job with the city building, so she can clean things up, because that's the only thing she does. She doesn't do a damn thing. She's like the rest of you guys. Very little, all mouth.
Any bells? Have any comments? I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Oh, yeah, there are refreshments over there in honor of Mark Coleman. Feel free to enjoy them. But the council meeting, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.